Order and start off tonight, I want to welcome everybody here, appreciate you coming out. Asked you to silence your cell phones, I'll put it on vibrate and we'll start off the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you, let's.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we're looking at the approval of the agenda, any questions or changes on the agenda? Not a call for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the approval of the agenda submitted.
Okay.
Second.
Got a second on that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved as noted, next we have a citizen comment period. Remind you that the, each person, I only have two people signing up, but you have three minutes to speak. And you cannot speak on any topic that you have addressed to the board in the last three months. So first person I have up would be Ethan Megan Johnson.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Skelly told me last week that that was only applicable to public hearings, that citizens comments you could speak. Would you clarify that?
You can speak, you just can't speak on the same subject that you've spoken on before, that's all. You can speak on a different subject every time.
Well, if I say a word that I have said in the last three months, does that mean that I can't?
Means they gonna put you in jail. We have the sheriff here.
Thank you. Megan Johnson, District Seven. I was pleased in the last board meeting during public hearings.
In board comments, when Supervisor Sharp clarified that the board was not against the concept of solar, but instead objected to the media's misleading the public of your position on the subject. My husband and I are in favor of any concept and innovative harnessing of natural resources that eases the lives of county residents. Yet, we're, we are realistic of solar's inefficiencies, environmental filth, and difficulty in disposal. I thank you Chairman Scott and Supervisor Davis, who is not here, for your comments that also added balance to this and other subjects. Supervisor Bansley, you clearly have a heart for the tiniest among amongst us. You Supervisor Tuck, for I thank you for your leadership as a former chair who maintained a smooth and organized flow of discussion during each previous meeting. Will you join me in prayer? This is a prayer of praise, intercession will come another time. Heavenly Father, Yahweh, we stand in awe of your majesty and your power. For we are your created beings who stand before you, giving honor as you sustain the universe, our nation, and our county. Your son's word says the government rests upon his shoulders. And as such, your Holy Spirit guides and directs our Board of Supervisors in their governance of practical matters. We thank you for every supervisor, as well as unsung advisors who faithfully counsel the board. Mr. His, Attorney Skelly, Sheriff Miller, Chief Blankenship, Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Luckett, and the two gentlemen whose names escape me right now, but you know their names because you created them intimately. I ask you to bless these two men and all others who contribute to the smooth governance of Bedford County. I thank you Father, that all supervisors appear to actually listen to their citizens to actively engage and carefully consider, consider adverse opinions. In closing, we ask your son to reveal himself in a very personal and powerful way to everyone in this room, so we glorify you in citizen responsibility and governance. By the power and the authority of Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Johnson.
Next, I have Beth of Museum, Noel, I think it's Woodford.
Woodcock.
Okay, Wood.
Hi, everyone, my name's Noel Woodcock with the Bedford Museum, I work as the museum manager there. The museum wants to thank you for your continued support. Your generosity allows us to continue with our mission, and that is to preserve the history of the county, as well as educating future generations about the rich history of Bedford. I have sent all of you a biannual newsletters from 2023 and 2024. I hope all of you got a chance to look them over and see what we have accomplished since May of 2023. In those newsletters, we have a section that mentions some of our donations that we've received. A few of them are a room key from the Hotel Bedford, which is found buried in the backyard of Jeter Street. Billy Club linked to Thomas Wills, who was a veteran of the war between the states. And a traveling chest owned by Ralph Leffwitch, which has historical significance to the Leffwitch family. Our exhibits, as well as our geological library, attracts visitors from across the United States and beyond, including places like London, England, and San Diego, California. We also attract visitors on our Facebook and Instagram pages. On Facebook, we have reached four thousand seven hundred and fourteen followers. The museum tries to do as many historic posts as we can covering a variety of topics, as well as advertising for events coming up slash promoting our train exhibit sponsors. This year, we have hosted our first annual Christmas party for the community, featuring Santa and Mrs. Claus, along with three engaging craft stations for kids to create popsicle reindeer ornaments, color gingerbread men, and write letters to Santa. Additionally, we organized a Christmas themed scavenger hunt that spanned all three floors of the museum, making for a festive and memorable experience for families. We also have an upcoming Vietnam Veterans Exhibit, and our rotating exhibit cases on the second floor. This exhibit is in conjunction with the new Bedford Vietnam Veterans Memorial, coming later this year. The aim is to have it completed by Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day on March twenty ninth, and host a special unveiling of the memorial. It's been half a century since the Vietnam War ended, and it's crucial to honor and recognize the sacrifices made by these brave men and women. We are reaching out to the public for any artifacts related to the Vietnam War, seeking donations or loans to enrich this meaningful exhibit. Our goal in this new year is to bring back more events slash programs for the community, such as the Ghost Walk, which we have done in years past, genealogy classes and history lectures, trivia nights for the community, as well as behind the scene tours with the museum employee. And we hope to bring a new program called Adopt An Artifact, where patrons can symbolically adopt a specific artifact from the museum's collection that needs improvements or preservation. Finally, I would like to highlight all our amazing volunteers, employees, Board of Directors, and former directors. The museum would not be what it is without the help of these people. First employee we'd like to highlight is Matthew Dunn, if he would stand up. Matthew Dunn is our newest employee who started January second. He is responsible for processing our memberships that come in, working on the website, processing parking, completing research requests, as well as labeling geological information to be filed. Van Cooper is our, one of our part-time employees, he started in November of 2023. He has been working on digitizing all our records in our geological library, so that members have access on our website. He is currently scanning new sessions that come in and put them into past perfect, as well as scanning our obituary collection. Our Board of Directors, our new Chair of the Board and former Executive Director is Leslie Mahathy. She has been involved with the museum for many years. She is very knowledgeable about the town and county, and will be a great addition to the museum as the Chair. Wayne Folks is our next Board of Directors member. He is also our IT person at the museum. He operates his own IT company called Webstar IT, and he has helped us greatly with the website over the years. The next board member is Rusty Hicks. He lives in Bedford and works as a CPA in Lynchburg, he has been on our board for several years as well. And lastly in attendance is Doug Cooper, who is the past Executive Director and past Chairman of the Board. He has continuously stepped up for the museum these last twenty-plus years. We would like to thank you again for your support and your time this evening.
Okay, thank you, and thank all of y'all, I, I know all the board feels the same way I do. I think the museum is a very important part of this county, this county has a rich history. And thank y'all for what you do, and we really appreciate it. Okay, that's all I had signed up to speak, is it anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I close with a citizen comment period. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, Mr. Hicks.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have six items this evening on the consent agenda. Item A is a resolution approving a supplemental appropriation of the Waterside Road Bond Funds. Item B is a resolution approving the appropriation of funds for the Mead Road VDOT Economic Development Authority Grant. Item C is a resolution authorizing the supplemental appropriation of funds for Zytel and Shentel Virginia Make Ready Initiative Grants. Item D is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the Sleepy Oak Lane Project. Item E is a matter that we discussed during the five o'clock work session meeting, which is a res- resolution supporting the funding for repairs and strategic implementation of the Blue Ridge Rising Initiative along the Blue Ridge Parkway. And item F is also an item that was discussed during the five o'clock work session meeting, and that's a resolution approving budgeting and use of funding for the expansion of the Southern Virginia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Forensic Cloud Project.
Okay, any board members have any questions?
Just one clerical correction on the Waterside Neighborhood Project that is located in Goodview, not Huddleston.
Okay, so noted, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second, I'm not second, I'm asking for a second.
I'll second it.
Have a second, had the motion by Mr. Tuck, and second by Mrs. Parker, roll call. Oh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Bansley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Barbara's on board. Okay, Chair votes yes. Next we have the approval of the minutes. Any corrections to the minutes? Call for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, who second it? Mr. Tuck second, Mrs. Parker made the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Okay, we have no public hearing presentations tonight, action and discussion items. Consider, consideration of a resolution approving a contract for banking services. Resolution R. zero one two seven two five dash zero nine. Mr. Per.
Good evening, everybody. So this resolution basically is authorizing the county administrator to approve a contract for First Citizens. A move from First Citizens to First Bank and Trust. So a little bit of a history on it, we've been with First Citizens Bank next door for about fifteen years. There, right now, we're earning approximately point four percent interest on all of our funds, so we thought it was a good opportunity with the rate environment and other banking services that are coming available, to see what other services were out there and what other firms might be interested. So we did the RFP, we had six responses, First Citizens, Pinnacle Financial, Capital One, Carter Bank and Trust, Truist, and then First Bank and Trust. We interviewed two of those, Truist and First Bank and Trust, and then the committee voted to recommend First Bank and Trust as our banking partner moving forward, for a period of one year, and eligible to renew for four years after that. And I'm happy to answer any questions or anything that you all have about the contract or banking services in general.
Okay, any questions?
I know the last one, they did a lot of their services out of state. Did the, this one, did they, their services in state?
This one does most of everything in Abington. The lockbox services were not included as part of this RFP, so that will stay in Raleigh, I mean in Charlotte, excuse me. The bills will still be processed in Charlotte.
Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding the courier services that are mentioned here, because obviously they do not have a location right here. I'm assuming this is transport cash?
Transport cash, yes.
Are we paying whenever they need to go, or are we paying something monthly?
It's a monthly expense that we'll be paying, they're gonna actually set up a cash vault essentially within my office. This will then be picked up by Loomis. Cash will be transferred back and forth via Loomis, instead of me or one of my staff members transporting the cash as we do now. What we can, there is about a thousand dollar expense for that, depending on the services that we choose with the courier, but that will be offset by the savings and monthly fees that we're currently expending. We're spending about sixty thousand dollars a month, I mean, excuse me, sixty thousand dollars a year in banking services. That will go down to essentially just the cost of the carrier services.
My suggestion or question would be to retain a small account, so that you don't have to worry about courier services. That wouldn't cost you anything, and then transfer your funds out, however often you need to do it by EFT or something, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate any suggestions.
Any other questions?
I know citizens have been upset about the fact that they have to write checks and they have to go to a different state, is there any way we can get those in?
That is a long-term plan for my office, that is, we will eventually move that back in-house, is my hope, but this is some of the preliminary work to lay that foundation, so we can't do that.
All right, no more questions, I call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. zero one two five two seven dash zero nine.
I hear a second.
Seven two five, not five two seven.
I'm looking on the document. It must be seven two five, sorry, the document says five two seven. We'll want to fix that on the, on the resolution page.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sharp, second by Mr. Tuck, roll call. Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution authorized the application of ECJS Operation Ceasefire Grant Program. Resolution R. zero one two seven two five zero five. And, yes, John, you gonna do that?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's names on here, but you qualify.
Yes, sir, he couldn't make, thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Miller to present for application and acceptance of a DCJS Operation Ceasefire Grant. What we are asking for in this grant would be a total of one hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-fourth cents to purchase forensic crime scene investigation equipment for the sheriff's office. The intent of the grant is to support the use of technology that will result in reducing violent crime in the Commonwealth. The sheriff's office is requesting grant funds for two 3D laser scanners, one handheld, one on tripod, two fingerprint biometric identification systems, and one chemical identification spectrometer. The two 3D laser scanners, one handheld and one tripod, will use on crime scenes. The scanner can capture millions of data points per second to include the position of evidence, blood spatter, bullet trajectory, and other details. The data can be used to create virtual three sixty degree model details, available from different angles of the crime scene due to its capacity to capture accurate measurements of items, buildings, and environments. This will allow the investigators to capture the crime scene for future forensic analysis. This then becomes a powerful and visual method to present cases in court, along with findings to judges, juries, and attorneys. There's added benefit being able to easily preserve a crime scene for further investigation or future use. Without this technology, investigators further investigation, excuse me, without it, in this technology, investigators must spend numerous hours with skill, with steel or video cameras, tape measures, and measuring wheels, working to document the scene and collect evidence. This is sometimes complicated by a short time to collect evidence and the challenges of other people present and seen possibly being contaminated. The scanner can complete a three hundred and sixty degree image of a scene in a matter of minutes, while recording precise dimensions, evidence, features, and later analysis. Investigators can return that, the technology for accurate location of evidence. Investigators can return the technology for accurate location of evidence, the scene and its estate, and rebuild circumstances that led to that end. This eliminates the need to return to a crime scene repeatedly for further evaluation. This is a powerful investigative tool, particularly with preserving or presenting evidence to judges, juries, who are increasingly introduced to high-tech evidence in courtrooms. Additionally, this tool can document and recreate shootings, document speed and accuracy of crash scenes, map infrastructure for emergencies such as churches, stadiums, schools, and public events, and analyze an arson crime scene. Not only does this 3D scanner save time and improve productivity, but it displays evidence in courts and is difficult to refute. A lot of times in our big scenes we have now, we actually have state police and others come and do this for us, so there's nothing we normally have. What we do is we're actually take pictures, we'll measure, we'll have to draw diagrams. This is a big step above for that. The next thing was to purchase two fingerprint biometric identification systems, along with Data Work Plus. This is a tool we currently do not have. This tool captures the prints of the fingers placed on a scanner, and it searches then submitted to the State AFIS, which is Automated Fingerprint Identification System, and also the FBI Fingerprint Repository. Results are routed back to submitting device usually within two hours with data and a photo, if applicable, to include multiple records. This tool is a quick and highly accurate way to authenticate an individual's identity based on the unique patterns of a person's fingertips. This tool will assist not only with the identification of unknown-to-seek subjects, as well as assist in the identification of a suspect trying to conceal their identity, such as those here illegally with no identification, but at some point have been fingerprinted due to a crime or some sort of processing, which identity is found, the proper authorities could be contacted. Further, law enforcement is alerted if there are any active warrants, any type of warrants, and the jurisdictions for the warrants. This is a powerful tool to establish legal evidence and support investigators. Lastly, the chemical identification spectrometer. This tool is a handheld device that provides non-contact drug identification. It is a device that analyzes substance used light absorption to identify their chemical composition and provides results in less than 20 seconds with reference to a library of more than 24,000 substances. Further, it's non-destructive, non-contact analysis, which minimizes and offers exposure to unloaned materials such as fentanyl and preserves the evidence. Most illegal narcotics that are seized contain a fentanyl, which is now classified as an act of terrorism through the Department of Justice. Safety to investigators is crucial. Once a substance is identified, there's enough probable cause for an arrest. Under the current method, investigators need to send suspected illegal narcotic items to the lab for results. This could take three months or longer to get results back to actually make an arrest. So for these reasons, we are requesting we can apply and accept this grant if we get it.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if there aren't any questions, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution R 012725-05.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Johnson made the motion. Ms. Bensley, second. Roll call. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a consideration of a resolution authorizing advertisement of an invitation for bids and a contract award for Bedford County Animal Shelter, Resolution R 01272507. This will be presented by Doug Kaufman.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider a resolution authorizing the advertisement and the award, if within budget, for, in addition to the Bedford County Animal Shelter. It's about 2,940 square feet addition that's going on there, mainly dog kennels. There's also a spay neuter clinic. Essentially, it doubles the number of dogs that the facility could handle at any given time. It also reorients the entrance from the front, kind of turns it to the side, facing the sheriff's office, kind of a facelift kind of thing, making it a little more curb appeal kind of stuff. But anyway, it's expected, our budget is around $313,000, and if it falls, if we get the bids back, and it falls within that, we would go ahead and award it based on this resolution as well.
Any questions? I have one question. The budget, how'd you come up with that?
So I had prepared a budget estimate, and the architect also prepared a budget estimate, and this was the architect's budget estimate. They were pretty, they were essentially right on each other.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, so the approval of this tonight, we're going ahead and approving if the bid comes in to the construction for 313,000 or less, we're going ahead and saying tonight that that's okay?
That's the way I understand it.
Yes.
How are we leaving the bids out there for?
The bid date is February 21st.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question. Would that include the contingencies? Normally, you have a 10% contingency, so I'm assuming that you're going to probably need a bid in the 280 range to be able to cover your contingencies.
There was, I believe, a contingency figured into that 313.
So this would include the contingencies?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. If anybody planning on bidding, get your price down.
Hey, the low bidder-
Don't try to maximize.
The low bidder wins anyway, you know?
Any other discussion other than move forward fast?
I hear you.
Mr. Chair, if there's no other discussion, I'd move for the adoption of Resolution R 012725-07.
I'm second.
Second from Mr. Johnson.
Motion made. One, two. Motion made by Mr. Tuck, second by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, Doug. No board committee reports tonight. Any board comments?
You had a board appointment. What do we have to do? Oh, we're not there, sorry.
Did I skip that?
No, no. I was thinking board comments was later.
Any comments? Here none. Mr. Hiss, have anything to report?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Next is board appointments.
Edgar, you willing?
We're working it out between us. Yeah.
Can that be shared?
Yeah. I'm happy to fill in when he can't.
You need to designate an alternate.
Okay.
So you're accepting the appointment with Mickey being an alternate?
All right. Mr. Chair, then I'll make a motion to appoint Edgar Tuck as Board of Supervisors representative to the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization to fill an unexpired term beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2026. And in that motion, I would like to nominate Mickey Johnson as an alternate when Mr. Tuck is unavailable.
For more when he's available.
Again, you guys work out those details.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Sharp, a second by Ms. Bensley. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. Skelly, you have anything?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right. Board information, nothing. Calendar, Mr. Hiss?
Yeah, the only thing is, we'll have a February 10th will be our next meeting. We'll have our annual work session slash dinner with the Cooperative Extension Office, and that's it.
And that'll be in there.
There we go. Downstairs.
Yeah, so it'll be in this building on the first floor, training room downstairs.
Mr. Chair?
What do they have for food?
Mr. Chair? I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Sharp makes a motion to adjourn. Doug, get a second.
Second.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Well, do we need to vote on that? All in favor say aye, or stand up.